Nice.
Kathy.
Okay, thank you.
Wow.
So the most exciting thing is we have now hired a new Ag Natural Resources educator. Her name is Angie Arnold. We interviewed at the very, very end of July and she was nine months pregnant when she interviewed. So she finally had her little guy August 12th. But then he's had a couple of things, a couple of hiccups, a little staph infection, which is never a one thing. So she'll start on October 29th, that Monday. So we're really excited about that. So 25% of her time will be in trouble.
Okay.
So. Good.
Yeah, it's gonna be nice to have a little more stability hopefully as well. And she's an agronomy specialist, which will really help us out with a lot of our crops here. So we're excited.
Who's gonna start?
So Jeannie's gonna talk about some of our nutrition programs.
Yeah.
Right.
I have not been here in such a long time. I can't even tell you the last time I've been here. But I feel like I have the honor of providing a very important program and needed program in the county. And the best part is, is that it's free to the county.
Wow.
So.
We left that.
Yeah, yeah.
Free is for me. So go ahead.
Yeah, so just like on the front of the folder, just for short, my program is, it's FNF, but it's the Expanded Food and Nutrition Education Program. And actually this year we're celebrating the 50th anniversary. The program's been around for 50 years now. And it is a nine-week program that I do here in the county. We focus on physical activity, food safety, meal planning, label reading. We do cooking every week in class. We focus on the food groups, the MyPlate. It is a very, very good program. And I'm not just saying that because I'm coming in here and talking to you today. I really believe in it. And as I keep talking, you'll see that it is a very good program. I have a target audience. It's adults with kids 18 and under. It does not have to be like your biological kids. It can be grandparents, you know, that are raising their kids. It can be, sometimes siblings are raising their younger brothers and sisters. It can be foster parents. Just anybody that has kids under the age of 18. We provide incentives every week when I go out. So like they get scrub brushes, cookbooks, measuring cups. What else? They get something every single week. Chop mats, yeah, chop mats, thermometers, like meat thermometer, water temperature thermometer.
Each week through the nine-week program.
Yes, yeah. And, yeah. Yeah, so like, they're kind of, they can kind of get their whole little kitchen set up for them with the stuff that we provide.
That's pretty cool. How old do they have to be or is there any age restriction on that program?
No, just they have to have kids under the age of 18. So like I said, it can be grandparents that are raising their grandkids. So there really isn't an age restriction. Now, the sites that I've been going to, I think you'll be really pleased with the sites that I've been going to because there is a real need. I've been going to the Root House since it has been opened. So I was trying to remember when I was trying to think ahead before I came here. I cannot remember when the Root House opened. I think, I want to say 2014 maybe? I think right around there. So I, I call myself one of the OGs there. I have been there since it opened. They opened and the next month I was there. So I've been there since they opened. I have, I do not rotate out of there. I am there every single week.
So you're teaching the guys how to cook and all that?
And basic nutrition, yep. I'm at the Horizon House. I've been there since 2011. I looked that one up. I've been going there since 2011. I go to Park.
I was just gonna ask you about Park.
Yeah, I go to Park. I go, so those are the three main nonprofit 90-day treatment facilities that I go to. And I mean, I'm there year-round. I, I never leave there. I am part of the family there. And they need it. I mean, they, I hear their stories on how they eat, how they didn't eat, you know, while they were using. So I have, and you'll see when we get to the program impacts, I've had great results working with them. I also go to GED sites. I've worked with English as a Second Language. That's a great site to work with. They're really fun to work with. Basically anywhere else that, you know, that wants me to come and work with them, I work with them there too.
Have you ever contacted our jobs and family services? When you talk about grandparents raising kids, I mean, I know they have a lot of children.
Yes, I have.
Capital care.
Yeah, I have worked with, I've worked with the Foster Parents Group. I've done work with.
Good.
I think because they need so many hours of continuing education, the foster. I forget what the technical term is, but they, when you're a foster parent, you have to do so many hours a year of continuing education.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I have worked with them. I've worked at, I forget what the program's called. It's, it used to be in the Sparkle Market.
Ohio Means Jobs. It's still there.
Oh, yeah, I've worked, that was probably about a year ago. I did some work there with, with some of them. What's hard though is that, is to keep having them come back. They have to come back to complete the class for nine weeks. So sometimes they end up getting jobs. So they don't, they can't.
They can't fulfill the.
They can't fulfill the nine weeks, yeah. So it gets tricky.
Because we can't count them unless they complete six classes.
Yeah, they have to complete six classes in order for them to count for my program.
Do you have them during the day or do you have any evening classes?
It's primarily during the day. The nights, I've tried nights. And what doesn't work at nights is most of them, because their kids are, you know, trying to get them dinner, bath, homework, get to bed. Yeah, so it's not that I'm opposed to doing evenings. It just hasn't worked out really well. Unless they're already somewhere where they're a captive audience, where they're there. Do you know what I mean? Like, like if I were to go to the Root House at night, where they're already there, you know? So.
And a year ago we changed to Sandler. We added an extra week. It was eight weeks. Now it's a sample every time. So not only do they make that menu, they get to actually taste that.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
And actually, it's more than a tasting too. It makes more than, they get plenty. And it might just be because my sites, you know, there's, you know, you go to the Root House and there's, could be eight guys or there could be 10 guys, or there could be six men. So sometimes they get more than just a sampling, so. So, alright, so inside the folder, I brought this, our program impacts. And this is to date so far for 2019. And so we're able to measure and get some really great impacts for my program. And how we're able to do that is at the beginning of the program and at the end of the program, they are giving, are given a 20-question questionnaire. And it's questions like, how many times a day do you eat fruit? And then they're given like five different answers. And then it might be, how often do you let your food sit out on the counter to thaw? Those are just some examples of the questions. Then they're given the same questionnaire at the end of the nine weeks when they're given their certificate. So they do the same questionnaire again. They're also, they also do a 24-hour food recall, which is like, almost like a dietary diary, I guess you could almost call it, where they have to write down everything they had to eat and drink in a 24-hour time period. And again, they're comparing, so like, I use this example all the time in my classes. I really did have a gentleman one time where he wrote down, he drank 12 Pepsis.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah. But at the last class, he wrote eight Pepsis.
So.
That's, that's what we're looking for. We're looking for some kind of change. And that is a change, you know? He, he got him, you know, in a nine-week time period, he decided, wow, I want to, you know, decrease how much pop I'm drinking. And he also told me he's working on trying to even get that down lower over time. So that's how we get our impacts. And as you can see, for 2019, it has been a pretty good year. So, and food safety practices, so that would be using meat thermometers, proper thawing tech, you know, techniques like the refrigerator, the microwave, the cold water. So 87% of my participants have improved in their food safety. 89% of my participants improved in food resource management. And that means meal planning, using a grocery list, checking your cupboards, you know, ahead of time before you shop.
Yeah, it was good.
And then, do you want me to go over each one of them? Do you want me to go through each one?
I'm good, but no, I can see it.
I didn't want to bore everybody by going through each single one.
I like to see the statistics.
Yeah.
Yep, good.
But yeah, so I've had really, I'm pretty happy with the results I've had this year. You know, I've had 151 participants enrolled in my program this year. I think that is a great number. And then we count their family members because we're hoping by them.
Rips off.
Yes. So we've impacted 602 family members by enrolling them into our program, into our FNF program. So. Yeah, and I also put in your folder a calendar for 2020. There's some really good recipes. There's a brochure about my program, so you can have this, keep this on your desk. You can refer me to other agencies when you think I would be a good fit for somebody.
Yeah, I like it. I like your calendar. It has recipes.
And we give these to all of our participants. They get a calendar. And they really like them too. But I, this is a, it is a very good program. And it is a federally funded program. We get to have this program in our county because we have an extension office. So, you know, it's funded through the USDA. And I like it that I get to help what is really needed right now in this county. And that is to help the people that are really struggling with addictions. I see a lot of them in the community after they take my class. And they come up to me and they tell me, Jeannie, I'm still, I'm still reading food labels. Or Jeannie, I'm using a.
That cookbook.
Yeah, so. And they'll even, I, I get repeats. They'll come back a couple of years later and they'll be like, I still have my certificate that I got the last time I was in your class. And they'll remember stuff that I taught them. And it's, you know, it's, it's a really rewarding program. And they do really seem, even though they're struggling with their own issues, they do seem to get a lot out of the program.
So when you're out and about in the community and you hear these groups like, we could really use these kind of resources for nutrition and stuff, it's between our two programs, SNAPEd, which is the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. Think of the food stamps, that card. They just have to be eligible. So like 175 to 185% of the poverty level. And just the group that we're going to just has to verify that they're in that income range. So we don't individually verify that, just whatever the group is. So it's workouts or whoever, those groups will tell us, yes, we have our participants meet that. And then we can go in and do a program. So this is half of our nutrition program. Well, actually, Jeannie's a whole person. We have her here. And then our other person, Jordan, we'll talk about the organization in a short, is our SNAPEd person. She's actually in Summit County, but spends half of her time here in Portage.
Good.
Yeah. And I've been here for 16 years, so I love it.
That's good.
Yeah.
That's long-term.
It is, it is. I'm waiting for a big award.
A major award.
Major, yeah. Red carpet, something.
So then, so then in the red packet, some of our 2019 impacts, reporting plans on that front page. Going through, we just put one, kind of one dot in each township to make it a little easier for you guys. So we have a club in almost every township, just the, kind of those ones where the arsenal is, where we're missing out a little bit. A lot of the kids in those areas go to a neighboring township. And then some produce safety certifications. So Robin was doing a lot of the produce safety. So in order for a farmer to sell to like, let's say a Giant Eagle or a Sparkle Market, one of those places, they have to have this certification to sell their produce. To say that they're using best practices for water management, handling the produce, and making sure that that's a safe food product when it gets to the grocery store. It's a federally required program. And then the next one, the red ones, those are all the FNF sites. So they're mostly in this area. So there's several sites there. Five that she's working with currently. So there's more than that that she works with on a regular basis, but just five that are active. And then the blue is where our SNAPEd sites are. So that's where our new person, Jordan, is spending a lot of her time. And of course up in Wyndham, working with that facility. But eight sites throughout the county. So those two programs are the example of a lot of match that we're able to give that doesn't cost the county anything. It's federally funded and through Job and Family Services. And then Master Gardener Volunteers, spread out kind of throughout the county. They're those brown dots. And I think they were in to talk to you earlier this summer to talk about some of the things they've been answering questions.
Yes.
And a lot of community service and such. And then the sites where a lot of those programs, one of those also in Wyndham, where there's a large, large community garden where they're managing a lot of the produce, helping people grow things and providing food for the people that are there. So that's a, it's a big help in general. The next page inside is our staffing chart. So Kim is our new office associate. We're excited to have her on board after Jeannie left earlier this year. And then the other staff as well. So the gray boxes, so like me, Jeannie, and Jordan, no cost to the county. So those are all provided by OSU and provided by USDA programs. And then our two educators, Angie, who I said like we'll start here at the end of October, pretty excited. We have all ladies in the office, you know, powerful. And then Ashley is our 4H educator. So that kind of explains what they're doing. And then I'll let Ashley walk through some of these impacts on the basic page.
Yeah, so the nice colorful page. We tried to put something a little aesthetically pleasing for you guys. So it's just general impacts. We have more to it, but I just want to go over some brief things. We do have 178 4H volunteers this year. We do have 40 4H clubs and about 12 1Hs. So yeah, it's a lot. We have been dwindling in 4H clubs though, unfortunately. Kind of with our 4H numbers in general too. So it is sad to see. We have been trying to promote it as much as possible. So hopefully we'll see those numbers go up again. For the Master Gardeners, they do have 55 Master Gardeners. Seven of them did essentially retire this year. But they can still help out in different ways. They just aren't required to do the, I think, 20 or 40 hours.
They don't have to enter their hours anymore.
Yeah, so they're retiring essentially from, from being a Master Gardener. So in overall, in Portage County, we do have 240 volunteers. And then the Master Gardeners themselves, they haven't entered all their hours in yet for this year. But so far they have over 5,685 service hours just for this year that they do for free with volunteer. That next one is between Jeannie and Jordan, between both of the nutrition programs. They've reached 2,714 this past year. And the next one down is our Carteins program, our Safe Driving program. We just finished one last night and we have 213 youth that have gone through that program just this year. They do, we do require that a parent goes through it too. So technically we have, what, 426 if you want to count that parent as well that have been through that program.
Great partnership with the court.
What exactly is the Carteins? Can you give me a little?
Yeah, yeah. So we just started it last August with juvenile courts.
Okay.
We work with Judge Berger. We started it up last year with Ohio State Highway Patrol. Chuck Hoskins, he's one of our 4H volunteers, but he's also a trooper. So he, they help in this as well. And essentially anybody who's under the age of 18 and they do have a traffic offense, typically just the two-point violations, they are sent to our program. If they complete our two-hour educational program, if they pay their court costs and if they don't have another traffic offense in six months, then they are wiped clean of that and they don't get points added to their license, which is huge, not only for insurance and they get a break that way, but they essentially get a second chance. So we've had, just this year, we had 213. And then we had quite a few just last year as well. So probably easily over 300 that have gone through that program since we started it so far, so.
And how long is the program?
It's a two-hour program and we do it once a month on Wednesday evening. Yep.
So Ashley trains our 4Hers and then they teach. So it's peer-on-peer program.
So it's a team leadership program on top of it too.
So it's not us just saying, be better at driving.
Yeah, and we do a lot of hands-on. We get a lot of great feedback because most of the kids coming to it are like, oh, we're just going to be really bored learning from a lecture. But no, we do a lot of hands-on. I mean, that's what 4H is. So we do a lot of different like drunk goggles simulations. We have a driving simulator that they do as well. Do a lot of hands-on stuff. So they, they enjoy it too. Most of them are pleasantly surprised when they go through that program.
Maybe we'll bring them and get you guys in goggles and put up cones if you don't mind next time.
You guys can always come to a program too.
Have you seen me drive?
It's fun to experience with that. And you're like, oh geez. And some of the new traffic stuff that is well beyond me. I'm like, that's a new law? Yeah.
We can enroll Director Morag. I've seen her driving.
Oh, and Tanner actually is one of our team leaders, sorry.
Oh, yeah, I see.
He's actually one of our team leaders for that. He, we just had a class last night, so.
How'd it go Tanner?
Really good. It was a good group last night.
What do they like the most?
The most? Probably the driving simulator, I feel. That's, that's the most fun of the activities.
They, yeah, they definitely, they like it because it's, like I said, not just a boring lecture that they have to come listen to. So that's a good part about that program. The next thing on that list for the farmers and gardeners, we have a lot of different programs. Between our Master Gardeners teaching programs, between what Robin taught. So all of those programs combined, we had over 490 attend those programs. We did have a new program this year, the Beef Quality Assurance. That's more of like an industry standard. So that is something that we did provide thanks to Mahoney County Haley. She came over and taught that to a lot of our adults who are in the beef industry that do need that quality assurance.
So if they don't, the largest beef suppliers won't buy cattle unless they have this quality assurance certification. So we want to make sure that even without an educator here, we get those farmers certified. So Ashley, Haley's been here and she'll be here again probably in the next couple of months to make sure that happens for those farmers. So the other thing we did was an organic farming workshop, because that's especially in the northwestern corner of the county. All those folks selling to Cleveland. So we're really pushing that with Angie in the next coming year too, to really help get those folks up to speed. And the ones that want to get certified will get certified.
Do you guys work with the organic one in Hiram? They have a farm. You ever seen that on there?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yeah.
And then our 4H projects as well. So we recently talked to the Ford Authority and he had a little bit of interest in what kind of workforce development things we have. So what Ashley does with individual projects, so a lot of people think of us as just fair, just livestock. But no, we have hundreds of projects, including woodworking, welding, all those kind of tech kind of careers. And we have a lot of computer projects. So we're thinking about what are the possibilities and what are maybe some help they can give that we can do some more workforce development specific things with them. So we'd like to help them address those issues.
And then we have just some program successes on the right side. Just a couple of quotes from a lot of our different programs as well. I won't read all those, but if you would like to see those, those are just some of our main successes from the year. And then I think, I think you have that.
And then on the backside, there's our 2018 expenses. I think we already talked about those. Here's our estimates through the end of 2018. So some savings without having an Ag Natural Resources educator. So that's a little less than usual. Everything else is pretty much on budget. Under technology, we're hoping that 1,500, we haven't actually spent yet. But we want, we are, we're changing our technology. So we have to pay if say a Master Gardener laptop because of security issues, you know, tight stuff is getting and the challenges there. So we're hoping we can do an iPad setup with monitors for them. And then that's no extra fee after we make that purchase. And that'll help them answer the questions. So they answer hundreds of questions every year. If you're a homeowner and you call like, my tomatoes are dying, my trees are dying, what do I do? What's this?
Spider spray.
Identify this. Is it, is it one of the bad ones? Is it the black widow? They answer all those questions. So we wanted to do that, get that before the year's over to help get them trained on that during this winter. Other than that, the expenses are pretty much the same as usual and will be a little bit under budget, 87,567. And then for 2020, our request is to get that other 25% for that Ag educator. So in the budget for 2019 was only half like for Robin, but we're hoping we can do 75%. The other costs are pretty much the same as usual. So looking at that 101 for next year is a possibility. The other thing with this that we wanted to talk about is our lease with, so I think you guys also signed the lease for the health department at our building? So we're wondering if, and then you could take this, that part out of our budget, if you guys would take over that lease. So OSU charges us, you notice it goes from 27 to 24. OSU charges us because with planning and real estate, they go through and negotiate that lease. But if we did it through the commissioners, it wouldn't cost us as much.
They, yeah, I remember. They charge you like, what, 300 bucks or something?
And it's just to process it.
Next year, right?
Yeah.
And it's not our department. It's main campus. We can't change that. So in your packet is just a copy of that lease. So if that's okay with you guys, if the county would be willing to take that part over and they just, you can just take that out of our budget that way.
We will probably have to review this with our prosecutor.
Right.
Yeah, we wouldn't be able to do today.
I know, not today. No, this is the old one. This is just a copy of the old one. And I would assume what you would do is just look at the health departments, because it's the same guys? And then just say, add this one on, you know, add this space to that one?
No, it would be a totally separate lease because we don't pay the actual health department's rent. They would pay it. And, and yours, we would actually be paying it direct.
So if you figure it out, what else, whatever we need to help with and push it through, that would be great and save all of this money.
Chris isn't still here, is he? Okay. Well, if not, we'll get it to the prosecutor's office and see if they have any questions. So basically, just so we understand, you're wanting us to lease in our name, basically, a lease to you from the, the Family Community Services for your space? Just to see, because you guys get charged a processing fee?
I know. It's one of those things, it's kind of like the county government once in a while, there's a unit that's generated through them revenue. It's not paid for through. So that's why they do that.
And can you send a copy of this? Do you got a copy of it over to Chris? And just explain to him that they're asking that we lease on their behalf? And that we would just pay directly to Family Community Services versus paying to the Extension Board who then gets charged?
And if you want, I have an electronic copy, but I just had sense of, I can email that to you if you'd like that better. And then you can.
Sure.
And then the prosecutor's office needs to edit it, which I'm sure they do.
Well, yeah, they probably have to change dates and.
Right.
Well, actually, if you could have the one that you're wanting us to sign, not just this copy, that's probably what we would want. Yeah, update that and send it to Amy. And then we'll get it to the prosecutor's office.
Questions for us?
So we'll check on that. We're just moving right along. A lot of good stuff. Just basic stuff. And then, so you're asked this year, I don't know if we're to that part or if there's anything else you want to do.
So that 101, and then we would take off the 2,400 off that. If, if that works for you guys.
Yeah.
So that'd be 98.6, right?
Yep, 98.6. So you're asking for an increase of 8,600 really? Got that budget man? Okay. Well, thank you guys for coming. I'm really enjoying. You guys have so much helpful information.
We appreciate your support.
Yeah, thank you.
Any suggestions you have of like, hey, we'd like to see you doing this or doing that, get some partnerships, that'd be great. Again, with those nutrition programs, when you're out in the community, say, hey, well you guys can get this free from our nutrition programs and extension. That's part of the partnership. So, you know, feel free to share that.
Sure.
And any other suggestions.
Well, obviously, I'm surprised at the numbers. That's great. I'm glad to hear that you're going into those recovery centers and stuff because you're right.
They need it terribly. Yeah, it's a hope. They love it too.
Because you know, the physical, the mental, everything's tied together. So it helps them on their recovery.
And then the stuff they tell me, like what they eat while they're in jail. And I'm like.
Do we need to sign the sheriff? In the jail?
So.
The calvis area is where they get the.
Oh.
At the bottom is that OSU state and federal match. So that's.
Yes.
Our estimate's one twenty three, seven thirty eight. So it's more than a one to one match to count it out. So just to let you know that part. So that's the cost of Jeanie, all those incentive kind of things she's able to provide. The cost of Jordan and a little bit of my, of me, twelve and a half percent. So that's the, and in addition to the educators, county pays the cost share and then OSU pays all the additional salary and all the benefits. So that's where we get that number.
Okay. Well, thank you guys for coming in.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. A little after eleven, we got public comments.
You got somebody on that side?
Yeah. Sorry, Dr. Rush, you're out.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you again. And Ashley.
Good to see you.
Thank you very much. Good to see you. I like those names.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you want Tanner? Bye Tanner.
Oh, Tanner.
Tanner is my buddy.
Yes. Yeah, she, I'm looking at, I'm looking at getting it to be such.
Nice to meet you.
You too.
Amy, do we have anyone for public comment? I saw Stephen English. That's why I'm like, ooh. Wrap this one up because we'll just remind the rest of the five minutes.
Huh? Thank you. Did you have public comments?
Did he say what it's about?
Yeah, I just gave him a sheet.
We gotta make sure he doesn't have five minutes because we've got Jean and her first.
Jean, we have public comments first.
Yeah, we've got one public comment.
Is he coming in?
We've got the whole crew here.
Yeah, he's filling out a form. Hi, Stephen. How you doing?
Pretty good. How you doing?
Did you fill out a form?
Yes, 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 yes. She's bringing it up to you guys.
Okay, we have a whole crew behind you. No, you come and sit down first. We just have to write to the five minute rule today.
No, 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 that's fine. I only have a quick comment. Okay, Monday night in our home, at our home where we live at, the Porch County Sheriff's Department came through and flooded, opened up lights, you know, put lights through our home, you know, they moved up our living room and all that kind of stuff. But yeah, well, it turns out they were, we found out later by my neighbor that they were searching for a eleven year old boy that went missing.
Missing child.
Yes. Well, like I came here before, last year or this past six months, we wrote, Currier wrote that story where a hundred twenty one children went missing in Porch County and not one Amber Alert. I'm just trying to figure out, does Porch County don't care about the children of Porch County or the people? Because what I'm trying to figure out is why is there no Amber Alert thrown out for these children? Do children of Porch County, are they not worthy of Amber Alerts?
No, I wonder, I wonder if, if they have to be missing for so long.
Well, they say something about like running away, that they run away, but at the same time, okay, a child runs away from his home. Two minutes down his neighborhood, someone picks him up or her up. So now that, you know what I'm saying? So I would think that a child would be worthy of Amber Alert from, from zero seconds, you know? That, you know, that a child shouldn't have to be waiting, you know, twenty four hours before they, you know? I find that kind of appalling in a sense. You know, some people, you know, I'm a single guy that don't know children, but at the same time, I also have empathy for children and that kind of stuff. And it seems like Porch County kind of doesn't in a sense because, like I said, not one Amber Alert, you know? And then they said like on that story last time, fifteen percent went unclaimed. You know, those fifteen children didn't have a.
We'll check into that.
You know what I'm saying? You know, but I just noticed and, and you know, they just talk about paperwork and all this kind of stuff. And it's like, well, you're telling me a child's not worthy of paperwork through these local police departments? That they have to fill out forms and whatever y'all, y'all. So it just makes me interested in how, you know.
You know, I get those alerts all the time on my phone and on Facebook.
Yeah, but never from Porch County. I mean, if you ever, if you ever look at that, you know what I'm saying? If you look at that, yeah, you see all kinds, you know?
I see.
From stomach county, you know, different, but from Porch County, no.
That would probably be a good question for our sheriff to see.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying? Because, you know, I'm just, you know, it makes it interesting, you know? Because I'll be curious, to be honest with you, is I wonder how many children have gone missing this year so far? And how many children have actually haven't came back yet and no Amber Alerts? You know, last year was a hundred twenty one children. This year, we're already, what, nine months into the year? I wonder how many children went missing this year with no Amber Alerts and how many of those children aren't coming back?
That's a good question.
You know what I'm saying? In a sense. And I know that, and what really sucks is, and I'm, I'm a firm believer with, with our county seat. I do not believe that we should have a county seat because what that does is that segregates all these poor families in one area and then they're taken advantage of because people don't care about poor kids and poor families because, you know, they're just off to these services. And I hate to say this, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of this money comes from poor families because that's how you guys get funding. You know, I'm not trying to be, you know, but that's, it's all about funding. I mean, I'm even appalled not living on this one. You know what really appalled me too? We're a county seat area, okay? And we're supposed to be humanitarian, to help these families and all that. We have, we have a homeless shelter that's not even, that's not even built yet. It's been under construction for whatever cover up. I cannot believe that there's not a hundred sixty eight thousand Porch County residents. I cannot believe that that homeless shelter is not built and running by now. You know, we, we here because of the jail, because they rebuilt the jail because at the end of the day, if we had the homeless shelter built, all these guys that's in jail would be going to the homeless shelter. Because, you know, a lot of these people that's in the Porch County jail are now, are homeless people or people that don't have no place to go. So they, they make a curve out of that. They get arrested, go to jail, must get three meals a day. You know, I think I just read a story where the jail back in seventeen or two thousand seventeen, that the jail was so overpopulated, the stalls were so hot. Well, my question is, why did you guys overpopulate the jails for? Because a lot of those people can be released for like the non-abusive drug. So why, why were they, why were they overpopulating the jail system? Because those, those residents could have been released. I mean, were they overpopulated so we could get a new jail? I mean, you guys got twenty five million dollars for a new jail. And another thing, I promise, I'm living on this one. In that story, it talked about the video and that kind of stuff, like you spent all this money for the thing. But in the story, it also says that parts of the jail are not recorded. You know, there's section with cameras.
They can't legally be recorded, like the restrooms and stuff like that cannot.
Okay, because I just, it makes me wonder, it's like, you know, because the drugs didn't, because I knew that you guys spent a lot of money on these machines that are coming in. Well, I just talked to a summer county nurse, I've become friends with her and she worked at the summer county jail. And I was asking her about that and she said, she said, those machines don't work. She said, and I, I don't want to put bad rap on the sheriff department, but she said, these officers in these jails, they're bringing the drugs in because they're being, so my question, I guess, is how are, how are our officers and our staff being checked for drugs when they come into work? How, you know, I'm saying, you know, drugs come in, because I just remember reading a story a while back where the nurse inmate OD'd on heroin at the jail. But now we don't read no more about the story, the story fell, you know, the story got killed. But, you know, what, you know, whatever happened there, how did those drugs come in? Was it by, by employee? You know hypothetically?
That's a good question.
I mean, will we ever know? As, as a resident of Porch County, will we ever know what happened there? Or will that story just, you know, go away? All right. Yeah, so just basic questions. So I mean, I'll leave you on that then because I know you said you know five minute thing. But that was just one of the questions I can, is the children of Porch County not, you know?
No, you can ask good questions because I don't get it. But it may have to do with, they have to be gone for so long, but maybe wherever they originate from missing.
I mean, like saying hypothetically, I mean, I'm not, you know, I don't wish ill remote family, but say your child went missing. You know, just hypothetically, when he was young, you know what I'm saying? When you say he had to go to college. Would you want an Amber Alert for your son? You know, even though he went running, you know, he ran away. But how would you feel that can use, well, we can't post an Amber Alert until twenty four hours later? That would be.
Devastating.
You know what I'm saying? So that's what I don't understand. It's like, the kids are not getting these Amber Alerts, are they poor kids? Because I truly believe that if it was a rich kid, that Amber Alert would be out there. You know what I'm saying? I mean, you know, statistics, you know, I guess you would have to go and see, you know, see the child, see that kind of stuff. But I mean, I know it's all about statistics.
Well, you know, Steve, we will ask these questions, okay?
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Sorry, you guys.
That's okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, come on up guys. See him on the hot right?
That's what I said. Well, we should ask them. Are you gonna ask them?
Yeah.
Hi Laura. Hello, how are you?
I'm well, Mary.
Okay, who's on first?
Okay, it looks like September twenty fourth, the mayor, Clark of the village mayor, requested an extension to the operator of record agreement for our service agreement. Before I would ask you to consider that, I would like to say that this Friday, it was published today, their council was meeting to consider. The exact term, they're not reading. They're reaffirming, I guess would be the best way to say it, reaffirming the MOU that we entered into when we started the negotiations. We're probably within one percent of closing the committee's agreement on the language. And from that point, it has to go through a public hearing at Manaway. And I'm sure we'll have to be doing things on our side during that same time period. Then they're going to have to vote on it in three regular council sessions. And then at the end of the approval, hopefully that has to also sit for thirty days. Their resolution has the ability for the voters to repeal it, so.
So this has to be done by the end of November? I mean, and then let it sit?
And if we're gonna target the end of the year. If they do it during their regular council meetings, they could have the public meeting anytime after this Friday before their October fifteenth meeting, in which case they meet, I think, in the third week of the month. So they would meet three times, which would be October, November, December. So we'd be looking at January before the ownership. We don't know the details on that. We talked to the mayor this morning. She indicated that she could only attempt. She can't control what council's schedule is.
Right, yeah.
To get an extra reading in there so we can make it all closed. I did remind you that it would be clean to do it at the end of the year for their accounting purposes.
Well, she seemed to think that way too in her letter, right?
She did initially, yeah.
Has something changed since she wrote the letter?
Well, she just doesn't have council's blessing for their increased schedule. So that's, I think, still be intended.
Okay. And she's asking for an extension though, right? Until at least December thirty first, but in the meanwhile, they're gonna decide?
Right. I would recommend instead of December thirty first, that we use Friday, December twenty seventh. Thirty first is going to put us at midnight.
Right.
In which case it becomes a holiday and they're not gonna. Friday, the twenty seventh, December twenty seventh would be what we'd recommend. Is there a board meeting scheduled for this Tuesday?
No.
No?
No, we no longer meet on Tuesdays unless it's necessary.
Because that would, it would be on the third, in which case we got three days. We'll just get the revised language to you extending it because the only change in the contract would be the closing date. And they're in the process of, I mean, this Friday to put that in on their side.
This upcoming Friday, the twenty seventh, right? Tomorrow?
Tomorrow, yes.
But that's the only thing that you want changed is the.
The date would move from September thirty.
Thirty first to the, oh, July, until at least, yeah.
December twenty seventh, right.
But otherwise, you're, you guys are in agreement with everything then? As far as it going into effect? Would that go, would it change the effective date then? June, January first, it's still gonna be January first?
Could be, could not be.
That's why I'm asking, because if you take it over on the twenty seventh, if something happens, that may be your date.
Did we get an answer yet, Todd? I think we're covered on insurance. So if something happens and a transition occurs on any other time, we're still covered as operator under our current insurance and rate automatically.
So then you need to work on.
Getting them done by the twenty.
The date and the effective date, yeah.
Well, it's called, she's calling it effective in the agreement, it's the closing date.
Closing date, okay.
So you're feeling fairly good about this? David?
I, in terms of being close to.
Wrapping it up?
Yeah.
Having agreement terms that both parties are agreeing to. I believe we are.
Oh, very close.
Very, very nearly there.
Near and dear.
Todd?
Jean? You're the one I'm looking for.
I think we're as, as close as we ever been. At this stage, it's at eighty twenty, but we're putting eighty percent of the effort in the final one percent in this case.
Laura, did you have any concerns with that? Thanks a lot. All right, thanks guys.
Jean, were we gonna discuss?
Until we get language from them, I can go back next Thursday. You talking about the.
Whether they even want to place it.
What?
They, A, the committee members that we are, the four of us are talking with, they're asking for a cap to secure a maximum every year. Which I believe collectively we were in agreement, doesn't really cause a concern from, from our standpoint. What we, the last language that was drafted is it'll be a surcharge cap which we'll calculate every year and then the rate set by the board. Leading it that way, every year we'll either have a three percent increase in the cap or we're using the construction price index. So if we get a spike in construction cost, we'll protect it. Our worst case scenario is we'd be twelve months behind. If it happened in January, we set the cap, we'd be stuck on it.
Didn't they have a cat, an automatic increase set into their contract of like fifteen percent a year for like seven years or something? For the water, the rates?
This is the max that you guys would be allowed. Right now, Ma says you can set whatever rate you want within reasonable, you know, parameters. I guess what we're coming and saying is, do you have a problem with this agreement limiting that authority?
To a certain extent, the Manaway rate payer, well, the rate payers within the Manaway Village area, which, which you may be aware, they'll pay to base.
Porch County rates. For services.
For services. And then there will be an additional amount justified based on different factors, including age of the system and building up capital to be able to pay for, for certain things.
Well, that's why I was asking, because I know at one time, that was our concern because, you know, all their stuff is not in the best shape. It needs a lot of work, a lot of money. But yet they wanted us to like freeze the rates or something, but yet they had a build in caveat that their wait rates because, you know, they had discounted the rates for so many years and not done any repairs. They were to the point they were having to do substantial increases.
The, one member of the committee wanted a formula that would cap the rate. And what we're responding back with is every year we will increase it by either three percent of the construction price index, whichever is greater, and have a new cap. The rate is still set by the board commissioners. So I think at the end of four years, two hundred and sixty dollars was the cap. You know, so we, we believe, I believe anyway, we have. So, I think at the end of four years, two hundred and sixty dollars was the cap, you know, so we, we believe, I believe, anyway, we have plenty of money to do, uh, what needs to be done and pay to debt. The simple fact of the matter is, seven, ten years from now, when all the work's done, they're gonna know exactly what that rate's gonna be for the next thirty years.
So where is our rates compared to what they're currently paying?
Not including the surcharge for recapitalization? We're at sixty, uh, for a five hundred cubic feet per month, we're at sixty dollars and change, and they're at ninety dollars and change, just shy of a hundred. So there's that margin, that difference is where we're working, trying to work.
Trying to work on the capital.
For, for water and sewer.
For water and sewer, yes, yeah. So, when we look at our rates, and we're gonna have to change our rules and regulations and everything to bring them in as a monthly payer, but we would set our rates commensurate with everybody else in the county, and we, our county customers are paying less than they would be paying in twenty-twenty, considerable amount.
So the difference between the ninety and, and the sixty, the thirty dollars, you're just gonna charge?
Our initial charge is eighty-six seventy-nine surcharge.
Okay.
Plus our base rate.
Okay.
And that's really about volume use. There's no way I can say you're gonna be the same as me. So, you're gonna pay our base amount, whether it's minimum or some larger amount, plus the surcharge.
Okay.
So a large corporation probably would see a decrease, but a small minimum bill, the way they have their minimum bill set up, they're gonna see an increase.
Okay.
And they, two hundred and thirty-five cubic feet per month is their minimum, I mean, it's just.
Wow.
Yeah, so somebody that doesn't use any water at all, that gets more likely to be bigger than ninety gallons a day, at least not a lot of water. So, there's a lot of people that pay minimum bills, and that's one of the reasons they're in problems.
Wow. Okay. How hard?
Todd? You got our direction?
Okay, thanks so much for coming in.
Hey, David.
It's Jean. Hey, that is lit. I was sitting on the house, oh, thank you. Did you see my note on there? I wrote that note. Read that letter, because it's still insinuating that we may possibly replace it, and that was my concern. It keeps, and I'm thinking, I thought we already decided.
We're not gonna replace it.
I know, that was my concern, that's why I wrote that note at the bottom, because.
Did you give it to her?
I, I see what you're saying, okay.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah. No, we've made the decision.
Okay, well, I just wanna make sure, because when I saw you, okay, I'm like, ooh, I'm gonna talk to you.
You're right, you're right. Okay, that needs to be reworded.
And Joanne is outside.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that pretty clean?
Yes.
Because we have made the decision.
Yeah. I, I had questions, did you see on the letter that was drafted? So, we, we need to correct that, because, all right, um, I, let me see here, so we're down to consent agenda. I mean, I'm gonna make a motion to pull, um, resolution fourteen, seventeen, and twenty-five. Because we have revisions for each of those documents, uh, presented, revised, and I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the revisions to the, to resolutions fourteen, seventeen, and twenty-five.
And I was second, roll calling.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and I have one question on journal entries. I thought, it was number twelve. I could have swore Kelly Jo said that she was hiring a new vehicle operator position. I thought she was only gonna do that part-time, remember, she said they had a full-time, but he's like running ragged, and this one is for a full-timer.
Did she say twelve?
Yeah. On, on journal entry twelve.
One goes ten to twenty-three.
It's under HR? Okay, you're in the resolutions, look at journal entries.
And I was looking at the individual ones, you're looking at the sheet?
Yeah, because I don't think we have that, that would be in our file to sign, yeah.
Yeah, we don't.
It says the board commissioner is signing the personal, authorizing the full-time hire of someone as a vehicle, and I, I just thought, I remembered.
That may be a typo, too.
Do you want me to get the HR?
Yeah, yeah, because, do you remember that, or might, because I remember saying, we, the poor full-time guy, running ragged, and we needed a part-timer, so. Is, is she not here? I don't know. I don't know.
Just when you think you're done.
Do you remember that? HR said, as far as I know, it was full-time, that they're trying to get a hold of Kelly Jo.
Oh, but she's off today.
Yeah, she's off today and maybe tomorrow.
I guess, I could have sworn it was part-time. I, that's the only thing.
Well, we can pull it or you can pass it, we can amend it.
Why don't we do that?
I think, probably save.
Pull it?
Yeah.
Is it a motion, huh?
Yeah. Yeah, oh, yeah, okay. And then I'll make a motion to approve the journal entries as amended.
And I was second, roll calling.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Ricky?
Yes. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do we wanna read those resolutions that were revised?
Oh.
There's three of them. Well, this one, we don't have to reread, but the numbers have changed, the fourteen, seventeen, and twenty-five?
Oh, I thought I already approved them, the consent agenda, what they revised.
As revised.
Yeah.
Did you see these?
Okay.
Tots and.
Oh, you don't have to read them, just we revise them, though?
Okay.
Okay.
I don't know.
No, I did not see Tots, did you get Tots?
Yeah.
Did you?
Yeah.
He makes up them up.
He, um, emailed them. Yeah, I got them. Just a journal, and then you add the non-journal.
Or I have them, right?
Okay, yes. Yeah, I got the email. Okay, so I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second, roll calling.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Ricky?
Yes.